Okay, I want to thank you all for taking the time on this Sunday morning to come and find out exactly what's happened with our case, our public records request that I filed with the city of Tucson to find out what had happened with the El Rio GCU, Grand Canyon University, deal that we found out about a year ago this month. It's been a long haul. Luckily and fortunately, we've had Mr. Bill Reisner, who was a wonderful attorney who has been representing me in this case. Bill, as you know, has worked for the community on many issues that have been very, very important to all of us. Those issues that many attorneys are not willing to take on, and Bill has been there. He stood up for the rights of individuals, the ones that have not been represented in this community. So he wants to especially thank Bill for all the work that he has done. And many times... And Bill is here with us today also on this Sunday morning, as Bill has always been there. You know, when it's inconvenient or convenient, he is there. And Bill is going to explain exactly the judge's ruling, and that's what we're here to find out today. So, thank you, Bill, again, and please have the stage.
You know, one thing that seems a bit odd, in a way, is if, you know, I'm talking to a group that I represent as a lawyer, but, you know, I'm part of the group in terms of what the desires and goals of the group are. And it seems a little odd to have a camera. But, you know, one of the things that we see all the time in political struggle, which is what we're engaged in with the city, is that the city always asserts a hidden agenda. You know, that really what's going on here is somebody is trying to help a candidate who's trying to run against somebody else. Really what's going on is that there's this other agenda and something else. So I think there's a little clearing of the air when what we do as public, our meetings really have been open. We really don't have, you know, some secret conversation because what we're doing is not only open to this group, but to the people from 12 other neighborhood groups within the city that support what we're doing. And this, you know, we'll talk about it from, I guess, I'm stuck as a lawyer, talking about the lawyer's viewpoint of the ruling, but there's really so much and so many issues that we need to talk about. Quite narrowly, what the judge ruled on, in terms of the merits, was a motion that we made to reopen his prior ruling because we learned that, and really learned that, and proved that the city had engaged in intentional misconduct, intentional lying, and so therefore he agreed with us. And he's opened up his prior ruling. So that is, that motion was based on a rule we have. It's called Rule 60C of the Rules of Civil Procedure, which any time, I mean, there's a variety of types of misconduct that could cause a judgment or ruling to be reopened. And it's not an easy thing to do because naturally the courts, once there's a trial and once there's a decision, you know, they like to leave things settled. But nonetheless, if the misconduct is egregious enough, then the court can reopen it. So the court, of course, found that the city had engaged in this sort of, in this intentional misconduct that was in fact egregious enough. The court also found that the lawyers had violated Rule 11 of our Rules of Civil Procedure. What that rule's about is if we file something in court and make an assertion of fact, we need to, you know, believe that it's true or have made, you know, some inquiry to give us a basis for making those assertions. And he found, no, the city either intentionally lied or didn't look and had no basis for their assertion. So he found a violation of essentially, it's really an ethical rule that applies to all litigants. And then he gave us the relief on 60C. But he did something kind of interesting on the 60C part of it because what we had asked was that he reopen it, and then the next step would be to permit us to take depositions of people in the city and get them under oath. And of course, then we absolutely would know that all those people were involved in the lies and knew what was going on and involved in the misconduct. But the judge decided that there was a choice. He could open it up so that he could permit us, or permit me, to get the city manager and the clerk and the people in that office under oath and ask them questions that they're required to answer. Or he could tell the city, "Look, you engaged in misconduct before, and in fact, I'm, in addition to what he found as, what should be awarded as attorney's fees, that he additionally punished them, castigated them for lying to him." So there's a direct punishment there. And said, "Look, here," and he quoted in his rulings Cece's letter, "here's what she asked for. And you have until June 4th. And let me remind you that you are obligated, under the law, to fully, you know, to comply with this. And you didn't, and you lied to me, and I'm punishing you for it, but I'm giving you one more chance. By June 4th, you need to turn over everything that she asked for and certify that you've done it." And then in a footnote, he pointed out and said, "Look, nothing in this ruling takes away from the plaintiff's ability to follow whatever remedies they have. So if we find out they weren't honest the next time in terms of the certification, this thing can potentially be tested. Clearly, any other citizen can file a request for the same stuff." So the city's in really a difficult situation, but it's a choice. You know, that's a choice they've always had, the choice to comply with the law and be honest or continue to cheat, lie, and hide. Now, we can guess which cup they're going to pick up, but that's the legal posture that we're in. Now, of course, the, you know, our courts and, they're all appointed by Republican governors, apparently, and they get there through the establishment, and they really, you know, always like to send a message, you know, it's like, gee, I hate to do this, and I didn't like that you lied to me, but I'm only giving the lawyer a few of the hours that he put in, which is kind of strange because he found as a fact that they had snookered the court and lied to him and lied to us, and I'm going to punish you for it, but you only have to pay for a certain, a small number of the hours of, I mean, he found out that they extended the case, they raised issues that weren't there, they did all that misconduct that they created, but they only have to pay for a little bit of it. You figure, is that 30 hours would have been enough? Okay, that's another issue. And, you know, I think that has some overall importance to the community because, you know, in spite of being a young guy, I'm 70 and a half, I want to quit this business. And it's difficult to find lawyers who will go in and put in $100,000 worth of time and then, you know, get back far less than the overhead of their office. You know, those things have, it isn't something where you say, gee, Bill, you know, sorry about that, you know, that, you know, it's costing you a little money. It really has importance beyond that to the public, like, you know, if, when the city engages in intentional misconduct, if the citizens still don't get their attorney's fees from the city, it's a problem. And of course, the judge says, gee, but because he found out in testimony that there'd been a fundraising effort, and so therefore, hey, somebody else is paying these fees, so we don't need to pay them. But I want to move on beyond that. It's an important point. But this is something just that strikes me as the core of the situation is the lying, the lying by everyone in our city. And, you know, it's something that's personal and ingrained with me. I've never liked talking to liars. You know, the problem when someone lies is that then you can't believe anything, they say. So you're in a situation, oh, I'm talking to a liar, okay, Jesus, I got to remember now that this is someone that I can't believe anything. And that's what we're facing with the city. You know, I don't know, I know Cece and Sal and, what was it, like, how many people met at the mayor's office, you know, the city manager?
Yeah, the city manager, about 10, 15?
10 or 15 people concerned about El Rio, our issue, meet with the city manager and his staff. Albert Elias, I believe is the one that says, and the city, the manager is silent, that we can't talk about this because of a confidentiality agreement. That's what our city manager and his staff told a group of our citizens, and that was a lie. We got recently the email that from Grand Canyon, from Trio, I guess, saying, "Grand Canyon University has released you from the confidentiality agreement." That was dated February 20th. The meeting with you all was in May?
May 20th.
May 20th, okay. February 20th to May 20th. Everybody in that room knew there was no confidentiality agreement. And that's separate and apart from whether you can have those. I don't think they're legal, but that's, I had previously asked for copies of confidentiality agreements. They told me there were none. They told me, the city attorney's office told me, "We don't have any confidentiality agreements." And then I talked to, I tried to talk to Cunningham, Ulyk, city council people, they said, "We can't talk about this because of confidentiality agreements." Who lied to them? The city staff knew there was no confidentiality agreement. I just got a letter this week from, in response, I asked Dennis McLaughlin who his clients were. It's like, because we sued the city manager because he's responsible for the documents in his office. We sued the city clerk because he's responsible for city records. They came in, so we can't sue these people. And, you know, and on behalf of the city, got to dismiss this. So now, the letter from, it came in really just like one day before the judge's decision where the city attorney is castigating me and says, "Well, of course, you know, that we don't represent the city, we just, it's just these two individuals." Then the next day, of course, the judge rules and says, "No, the city's, you know, part of this thing too." And, but in his letter castigating me, the attorney says, "You know, Cece had a choice. You had a choice to sue the city or these individuals, and you chose to sue the individuals, so, you know, the city's not part of this." And then he quoted in our choice, the statute that says, "We do have a choice of which one we're going to sue." But of course, they went to court and told the judge, and the reason I mention these things, it's a little thing maybe that just lawyers look at, but lie, 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 lie. The lawyer who's represented the city for more than 20 years on election and public records matter, their public records lawyer tells the judge, "You have no jurisdiction to hear a public records case." Wow. They tell the judge, "What? He sued the individuals. He's not allowed to sue the individuals." Lie. "We had deposition scheduled for the manager and his stuff, they told the judge. We've turned over everything." A lie. That's the, what the judge refers to as the July 8 simple statement, that's a violation of Rule 11, a violation of other stuff. That's a lie. Then we go to court later, we've done it all. That's a lie. Every, every point, it's a lie. Who's responsible for the lies? Do we have a mayor and council that are concerned about honesty to the citizens? You know, when there was the, what is it, May 14th, when they had the executive session?
May 14th.
Yeah. Afterwards, I believe, we can check on it, but I believe that the mayor and council people said, "We're directing, you know, we've had an executive session, so now that we're, you know, negotiations with Grand Canyon, you know, we can't release some stuff, but we're directing the staff to, you know, to be honest and to give you records that they can and so forth and so on." So here in public, they're saying, "We're being generous and we're telling staff to give you that stuff." And every, everything, every lie has been there since then, and the lawyers, they represent the mayor and council. They represent the city clerk, who's sat through the trial, who knows what's there and sat through the lies. They give copies of these pleadings and letters to the city manager. He knows the lie. The clerk knows the lies. The mayor and council knows the lies. So, you know, we look back, I mean, I looked at this thing and certainly the, you know, the underlying corruption of sweetheart deals and undervaluing a stuff, the process, you know, all of those things are really important. And there's different portions of the banquet that may like somebody else because there's so many wrong things that the city's engaged in. But, you know, what strikes me the most, and it, maybe it's just our society, maybe there's no honesty anymore, maybe the city manager was a cop too long and thinks that that's what you do, you lie about everything all the time. I don't know. We do know that he's a party to the lies. That we know for sure. We know the city clerk is a party to the lies. We know the mayor and council are parties to the lies. Now, well, beyond that, we don't know really, like, who the attorneys are covering up for, but we know it's not the lawyers that are the ones that are inventing the lies because they're informing the mayor and council and the manager and the clerk of the lies. Everybody knows about the lies. Dennis McLaughlin, when he's a lying lawyer in court, he's lying on behalf of his clients because they want him to lie. That's the, that's the way it is. So, I mean, there's a lot to talk about, but I'm, you know, just, that's one little thing that really gets to me, and it's just because I don't like liars. And I don't like being in a community when all the council people think it's really cool to lie. And these are the people that have in front of them, hell, what were they accepting, you know, selling 114 acres of green stuff? But the staff at every stage lied. Remember the stuff we have about Casalemas, when The Economist is talking about all the jobs and what's going to go on with Grand Canyon? And she says, "Gee, the data shows that 10% of their students are on campus." And she goes, "Oh, that's not good enough. We need different numbers." So she writes you back, she says, "I changed it to 80%, and I want you to know, this really changes the numbers. This is not true." He goes, "Hey, cool, we got big numbers." You know, so when these guys have this basket of goodies and are giving away our stuff and our money, they accept the lies of the companies that are coming to them. You know, Casalemas testified, "Wow, we don't check on stuff, we just, you know, believe what they tell us. That's how we do it. That's how we do business." So anyway, let's, I mean, there's a lot to talk about, but it's a good decision, but the dirt and the shit's deep at the city, it's very, very bad.
Look, I have a quick question about what you were saying. In terms of, you said that the court, the judge directed the city to certify that all the records are turned over.
Yeah.
How do we know, what does that mean? How do you determine the certify? Who determines that? I mean, what does that mean?
Well, it means that someone on behalf of the city of Tucson and Richard Miranda and Roger Randolph, someone on behalf of those three, will certify to the judge, say, "Judge, you know, we've read your ruling where you've talked about that we have an absolute responsibility to turn over these documents. We've looked at everything that Cece asked for, and we've turned over everything." That's what they have to do. Now, you know, it's, I don't want to second guess whether liars who've lied 10 times will lie 11 times, but this certification is made to the court. You know, it's made to a judge who said he's offended that they lied to him in court. And he punished them and assessed a fine for lying to him. And then he pointed out that we have ways to go. You know, we know of stuff that they have there. We gave the, you know, as an exhibit, 15 people that we know which have files. Now, recently, I got a letter from the city attorney saying he checked with those people and none of them have files. So I assume that means that the city attorney has those files, since they said they turned them over to him, and so those files, you know, should be there. So we know certain information that may be able to give us the ability to test later whether they've done it. Plus, anyone else in this room or anyone else can file a public records request for the same stuff and take depositions and get them under oath. You know, they're in a spot where they have to evaluate what are the continuing costs of lying and cheating versus whatever they're trying to hide. So, you know, I was thinking later about, maybe I'd start a fund, be like a $50, $100 prize, we'll have a box, and each of us put in our entry of who they're protecting and what they're hiding. Just to, you know, because I don't, I don't know who it is, you know? Is it the Don? Is it, you know, who's, what are they hiding? And, you know, we all have our theories, you know? There's no question they're hiding and cheating for something big, you know? But is it the mayor? Is it Trio? Is it, you know, who?
Colangelo?
Where? Yeah, yeah, sure. So, you know, I don't know, it's just a thought.
All of the above.
Then later, we can announce the winner who, with the best guess of who they were protecting and what they were hiding. Who knows?
Hey, Bill, we get back in on Scott's point. If on June 4th, they don't produce what they should produce, can the judge find them content and find them and do all kinds of nasty things to them?
Of course, and we could request a hearing for that very purpose, yeah. We could request a culprit hearing, it's called.
Culp. Good.
All right, Mr. Judge, so June 4th is the date, because I understand that they're going to theoretically release the documents, release the files and so on, and I was wondering, how soon will you get a sense if they're going to stall again? Do they, how do they go about, how soon are we going to know? Because we're trying to work out a deadline a little bit here, so we're sort of wondering when the information might be coming out that we can make something of? When we might start answering those questions that yours, that were going to put in the box or the, and so on? When do you think that might happen if things go well? What kind of timeline for getting the information?
Well, you know, the one thing that the city has going for it is that there's no press in Tucson, so there's no TV, newspapers to cover anything. So it sort of doesn't matter how many times a liar, they're accused of lying and stuff, nobody but us will know about it. I don't know what choice they'll make. They have until June 4th. They don't need to wait till then. They don't have many choices to avoid complying with it. In other words, I don't foresee them taking an immediate appeal to the Court of Appeals saying, "We object, the judge is requiring us to follow the public records laws." You know, that's a, that's a difficult, you know, thing because he's, what he said is, "Look, you lied to me, the law requires you to turn over this stuff, here's the stuff she wants, turn it over and certify that you've done it. I don't want to mess with this case anymore." They can treat him any way they want, that's their, that's their choice, but they don't have many procedural options, except the obvious one we know, which they'll cheat, but that's, let's wait and see, you know?
What do you think? I mean, we know that they, those in the emails and things that were electronic, that 90-day or 108-day deadline has all dropped, so a lot of that stuff has gone into the ozone. I mean, the only way is to get it through a forensic audit, which they could. So, do we ask for that? Do we wait and see if they do it? I mean, to give us this records, they'd have to do, they would have to do one of those things for sure.
I don't, it's unclear to me whether it's dropped. You know, Parslo told the judge last time that they had created some post offices and, you know, what they call the data backup, and that he could maybe get some of this stuff. You know, one of the things, there was a factual error, I don't know if it's significant in the judge's ruling, but, you know, he said that the IT department didn't see Cece's request until a certain date. Their testimony is they've never seen it, never. That was their testimony. Their testimony was that what she asked for was combined with some other stuff that's privileged, that was given to them, and he couldn't quite remember what it was, but he's clear that the IT department in December, when they were posted, had never seen it. So the judge is wrong on that.
Yeah, he got it through McLaughlin, a memo from McLaughlin asking him for certain things. That's what Parslo said, that not my request, but how McLaughlin had requested it.
He, a couple... A combined request from unknown people for unknown stuff. They combined with yours and, you know...
Could you tell us where Trio fits in all of this? And, because, you know, that's a subject that you touched on, but a lot of documents show Trio and the role they played.
Well, you know, we don't, I mean, that, that may be the winner for who's being protected. I don't know. What, what is interesting with Trio is that they are a private corporation. And so their stuff is non-public. CC asks for stuff from them, they say, "We're not giving it to you because we're private." And look at their website, they advertise that they are a one-stop shop for if you wanna come to town and get property. And so what the records shows is that Grand Canyon University, according to the city, said, "Hey, we want a large piece of property cheap." That's what it said. Okay, they want a big piece of property cheap. What do we, you know, where do we find a big piece of property? Say, "Hey, how about this park?" And, "Cheap? Okay, let's see how cheap we can give it without violating a gift clause," you know? So that's what's going on with them. But, so Trio at the, set up the first meeting, where they have, you know, the usual suspects are there at that meeting, telling the city, "Here's what these guys, you know, want, and they want a big piece of property cheap, and it'll be great, there'll be jobs for the city, you know, jobs, anything's good for jobs, so, you know, let's do that." But what the city doesn't know, and all the evidence is, the city doesn't know who's on the Trio side of the fence pulling the strings, and who's getting the money and who's part of the deal. Because Trio has this secrecy deal, but they're the ones that go through with the city. The city has, you know, and it's like 21 or 22, all these really cool little things we can give you. You don't pay this, you get a tax abatement on this, you get the tax on that, we give you a special thing here. So there's a list, a goodie list, that they go with the city staff and work on. So the city staff has no idea who's on the Trio side of the fence, who's making money on the deal, but they believe anything that they're saying, and they, Trio suggests which of the goodies and which of the millions the city should give them. You know, I mean, a person who was suspicious might think that's a recipe for little hanky panky.
Well, part two of that question, if I could...
Oh, sure.
Is that property's 114 acres. The most that they needed was 25. But is there a clause in their agreement that they could use this property and develop it for other things? And that they would have been able to avoid property taxes because of a lease agreement?
Yes. Well, the, it's...
In other words, it was a scam.
Yeah, it's really unclear how much land they would need. I looked at all of the buildings that they claimed that they would be building, and eight acres would have been very sufficient for that. You know, I've used the figure thinking, okay, let's say they wanted to have some of the trees and grass and really have a big, showy, roomy campus, maybe 20 acres. But they were getting 100 acres or 101 from the city. The proposal, the 14 acres, I think, was between them and the Joaquin Murrieta Park, where the city was suggesting, "Hey, this park needs some more soccer fields and stuff. So your private company and your school can jointly use all of these soccer fields that the city will maintain at city expense, and it won't cost you any money." The 100 acres remaining, the city was promising to give them a special zoning category for high, high intensity, high development. So they were going to have 80 to 90 acres available for apartments, malls, whatever you're gonna develop. And I assume that's the kind of thing where the Diamond Ventures guy goes to the first meeting, who's the vice president in charge of big developments and financing and so forth and so on. So clearly, this whole thing was a, was a land deal, where a huge amount of money at public expense would be made, because they were talking about a 50-year lease, when the city ruled, say, five years is a maximum lease, and they were giving these guys a 50-year lease. And, yeah, so, I mean, that's, that's that.
I just wanted to talk about something you touched on, which is the Arizona gift clause, violations of the gift clause. And, you know, it's very important when you have public property, and if you're gonna sell public property, it's gotta be market-based value, so you don't undersell our property so that people don't get ripped up. Clearly, the letter from the appraiser to the city saying, "We're going to appraise this 100 acres that has electricity and water and sewers and grass and trees, we're gonna appraise it as a vacant undeveloped lot." Isn't that a violation, sorry, the spirit, but isn't it a legal violation of the gift clause by undermining the actual value of the property and trying to sell it or lease it to just to you?
Yeah, sure. It violates the appraisal rules, it violates the city's agreement with appraisers and appraiser and reviewers. It's, you couldn't be more wrong as an appraiser. It's what the appraisers call a hypothetical appraisal, where you assume as a fact something that you know isn't true. So you assume that this thing is dirt, no improvements, and you know that's not true. You know, kind of an interesting thing when you match up these, is there's a thing we have, I think it's from the manager's office, that talks about what a great, cool site El Rio is, about how, wow, and this is all we know, you know, that this thing is, this big 114 green acres, that it's right off Speedway, and it's, you know, on the bus lines, and it's near downtown, and U of A students at FEMA College, and it's got great sewers, it's got, I mean, all of that cool stuff, that it's absolutely required that appraisers discuss those. And we have the appraiser's work file, and so the city says, "Well, this is a summary appraisal." But the appraisal rules say that your work file has to have an analysis of all of that stuff. You've got to look and discuss it. That reflects value. And they knew that they were using that for, for, for a market value that they offered to sell it for. I mean, it is absolut, that part is, you know, absolutely outrageous. So, you know, as I said, there's so much stuff you could look at. You can look at it and say, "Okay, what's the value and how is the public being cheated?" Very interesting questions, very important questions. What is the city, how do they know about that? Or the issue of, everybody's lying to us. Are they all lying to us, call that they're in on it? Do they know who's in on it? Do they care who's in on it? I don't know these answers, but they sure as hell know.
So, and also, back on the hearing of the case, and where are our steps to go forward? And that's what, you know, again, called the meeting so that we could know what the ruling was about, and also, as a coalition, what can, what can we do? What are our next steps possibly to go forward on this?
Well, that's, that's, that's your discussion.
Okay. Legally, I mean, you said that anyone else could file a public information request based on the same thing that we asked for? Okay, that's one thing. The other thing is, again, and I'm gonna bring up the thing of attorney's fees, because it was a travesty with respect to what the judge ruled for, for Bill. I mean, not even a quarter of really the time and the expense that's gone into this case. It's just a travesty. To be able to, is there anything that can be done regarding that? Again, the June 4th, waiting to see if indeed someone is willing to certify and lie again that they've given us everything, so waiting until June 4th. But legally, can we, like, file a motion? Is there any other motions? I mean, it's, again, it's your time again, which you weren't paid for, and it's a difficult kind of a question to put before you, I think.
Well, you know, the judge has said that I have, I think, 10 days to file a, essentially an amended judgment. And then, I suppose, I have 15 days to file a Rule 59 motion for a new trial on attorney's fees, things, pointing out how that's really a bad decision, you know? So there's, there's something that could be done to that. I've not talked to my partner or, you know, thought out what to do, because, you know, all of that stuff, you know, it just digs the hole deeper, but, you know, if I'm not willing to fight over money, then... Seems like I should, you know? So, but, other than, than, than that thing, you know, I think, you know, I think the judge has authority to tell them, "Do your job and file it and certify it immediately." So I don't think on that, there's much to do but wait and see what they do, because we do know all kinds of stuff that's out there, and we'll have to see what, what they file. I mean, it's a, it's an interesting spot for them. You know, judges generally aren't too concerned when they lie to folks like us, but kinda take it personal when they lie to them, so...
So, does any other questions over the side? You got one more?
What's the process for, assuming that the city finds its inner soul, its public, its inner soul, the public servant, and it's all its purity, and they come forth and get, release everything on June 4th? What would be the process of reviewing the documents? Who's gonna be reviewing them?
Between 10:00 and midnight.
10?
Like seven, nine. I can give you my number, and you'll be happy to, we can exchange numbers. Question, or what happens?
Well, other than that, I'm gonna go ahead and end this, and let's go into a private session, and I thank you very much. Goodbye.
Thank you.
The very word secrecy is repugnant in a free and open society. And we are, as a people, inherently and historically, opposed to secret societies, to secret oaths, and to secret proceedings. We decided long ago that the dangers of excessive and unwarranted concealment of pertinent facts far outweighed the dangers which are cited to justify it. Even today, there is little value in opposing the threat of a closed society by imitating its arbitrary restrictions. Even today, there is little value in ensuring the survival of our nation if our traditions do not survive with it.